could address that, but that is clearly not enough in terms of the increase for the translators in the budget to warrant, just to say that we are, we are making progress. There is clearly one, one and a half million dollars that is owed to Luzerne County each year because it is ten million dollars on average that the county sends down to Harrisburg. And twenty percent of ten million dollars is two million dollars. And Luzerne County only receives half a million dollars each year for the court reimbursement when it should be two million dollars a year. So I believe that the county manager and the new council coming in has to do as previous councils did in lobby for an increase in that reimbursement. Also with regards to road and bridge, I believe that, you know, if the county, if the municipalities do not want to take back those county roads that are in their jurisdictions, their municipalities, after the county repaves it as it was standing policy for years, then the county council should look at probably putting a maintenance fee of some kind in order to remedy for the maintenance costs for road and bridge, considering that is a county expense that's ongoing. And I did propose the use of mobile scales. If the county manager remembers that, that should be explored. So I think those two things are needed in the future. And I will address the other ones at public comment afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, good evening, council. The only comment I have on the 2024 budget, kudos to the team for giving a zero-based budget and still increasing wages for the county employees. That was a, that was a heavy lift, and I'm glad we were able to do that. However, in the budget, if you notice, there is no 4116 department, which is the ACE Commission Department in the budget. I brought this issue up to council last year as the controller, and I'll bring it again. The council should not adopt this budget until we put appropriate funds in there for the ACE Commission. There is no funding for the ACE Commission to function. And currently, we are taking money from the solicitor's budget to pay for our ACE attorneys, which are mandated by your code. So it, it's very important that this council appropriate funds for that commission to function. Will we spend it? Probably not. I don't think we have a whole lot of cases, but we still should have appropriations in case we have to pay attorneys or mailings or certified mail, all of those type of things that that commission has to function with that is not in the budget. So I would appreciate it if council would take the positive approach and give us money in that commission. I did ask the committee to submit a budget when it was budget time, and they refused to do that. But if we don't have a budget, it's very difficult for us to function. So please, council, take, take time to take a look at that. And if we need to make appropriation, either take it from the reserve fund and give us appropriation. I would think twenty-five to fifty thousand just to hold us over would be neat. We probably won't spend it, but we definitely should have it. Also, the position budget, I think, should be adopted by council over the many years that council's been functioning. We've never adopted a position budget. It was always part of the regular budget. So the county charter says council approves all budgets with, with an S. So please consider that as we move forward. Thank you. That's all I have for council for this evening on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment? Most by Mr. McGinley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lescavage. All in favor? All right, meeting's adjourned. Next, public hearing will be at five, five fifty.
If it's hardwired, aren't they controlled all at one point? Just like a school.
Find out where.
Yeah, where he hit it. It's his last, uh, it's his last gift to us. You'll never be able to change the time on the clocks.
President.
Here.
Dermott here.
President.
Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here. Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here. Here.
All right, thank you. I will now have a public comment on the proposed ordinance amending capital plan budget for Luzerne County. Any comments from the public? Put it on, Mr. Griffin.
I, I have nothing. I'm sorry. I forgot to put my hand out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? Second by Mr. Lescavage. All in favor? Yeah, Michael. It's six oh one. I'd like to call this voting session to order. We already had the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus.
President.
Mr. Lescavage.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. McGinley.
President.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry. His vote. Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Wolliver.
Here.
Ten of eleven.
All right, thank you. Any deletions or additions from the voting session agenda?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. Mr. Skeen, would you please announce the executive session?
Yes, before the meetings today, we had an executive session relating to personnel matter, which will be addressed a little later this evening.
Thank you. Well, now, public comment on the voting session agenda. We only have one slip, Mr. Griffin.
Hello? Push the button, really?
Green.
There you go.
Yeah. Council. Council, fellow citizens, Greg Griffin, Swarsville. Agenda item number two. And I, I spoke last month, last meeting. I think the citizens of Hazelton, they do need a satellite office. The manager said it's for gun permits and other county business. But for seven thousand dollars a month, possibly eighty-four thousand dollars a year. And I, I asked council and the manager to ask Mayor Cusack for a better deal. I mean, the county coming down and opening a satellite office in Hazelton at this address, North Street, North Church, but paying eighty-four thousand dollars a year, eighty thousand a year, whatever, in not, and a council member, I mean, council members, if I was a council member, I'd say, hey, I want a better deal. I'm voting no. I want the citizens to have representation down there. But Mayor Cusack's, it's his citizens too. And, and council votes every year, I believe, a lot of money for the Hazelton Bus Department, Bus Company. And like, council's always been a very good representative council for Hazelton. And my point is, why are we paying top rent? And if council votes this through, it's going to cause a hardship on the budget. It could cause a future tax increase. And really, like, what other duties and services is this office going to perform besides gun permits? I mean, there, there could be a state reps office where gun permits could be sold or other offices, so. I, I just don't, as a taxpayer, I'm asking council to look this over and ask for a better, a better rent. It's the, it's, it's the logical thing to do. I don't think you should. I don't think you should rubber stamp this. You should, the manager should have went back to Mayor Cusack and said, well, $7,000 a month? How about 3,500 since we're mutually going to be helping the citizens? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Anybody else in the audience for public comment, Mr. Walsh?
Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. I just have a comment on number two. I'm worried about the precedent that it would start in the county. It's about 18 miles to Hazelton, it's about 18 miles to Fairmont Township, out where I live to drive come here every, when I come to these meetings. And Ross and Fairmont Township border one another, so I'm really close. And at what point does the back mountain say, hey, we want a satellite office out here too? And since Hazelton got one, can we have one out here? And I'm more worried about the precedent that it could set and overextend us in the future. So really, that's all I have for that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Alright, we have one hand up on the Zoom, Mr. Raybo.
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo from Hazelton speaking on number two. I would bring up, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that I brought up at last meeting that Hazelton City Council was not made aware of the proposed lease agreement until the Friday before the last county council meeting. And from what I understand, the city council still has not received the floor plan, a proposed floor plan, as to what offices would be utilized by the county and which ones would be used by the city. And also, as I sent to county council in the email, there is a precedence where no agreement or contract can be signed by governing bodies that tie, that bind the hands of the incoming county council and city council members. So this would go into a two-year lease, so it would go into the next, the new county council and the new city council members, it would bind their hands, so I would ask that the county council table this until the new county council members and the new city council members, which would be authorizing this lease agreement to be enacted. As far as number eight goes, did the county manager, Mr. Mitchell, look to explore with the district attorney into tying in the hotline with the the Act 90, which would be for out-of-state landlords that would be, you know, that have that have code violations, that have, that have ongoing code violations. As I said, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, there are plenty of out-of-state, out-of-area landlords that have extensive code violations and have not been addressed, and they are absentee, so I would ask that the county look into adding that stipulation that the district attorney's office be tied in with that hotline for out-of-state absentee landlords. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo, anybody else for public comment? Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
I just wanted to make a comment, just for my own education here. The comment was made by Mr. Griffin in the public. I think his comments truly minimize the usage of the proposed office space in Hazelton for use of gun permit office. I was under the impression there was much more than just gun permits. I'm just going to ask manager Crapmo, are there any other offices that plan on using the Hazelton office?
The fonetary's office, the clerk of courts, the register will to come up to the Brooksberry for central court. The courts also plan on actually moving magistrate's office in to city hall, which will be saving the rent that we're paying. There will be a saving there. Obviously, the sheriff's department, Iowa will have an office there. The public defender will have an office there. I believe the district attorney already has an office there and will continue to have representation there. We will have election materials there as well.
Well, thank you, if it was just for gun permits, I wouldn't be in favor of that smoking.
I wouldn't.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, the manager of Crapmo, anybody else for public comment? Motion to approve the minutes, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Alright, motion approved. Okay. Moving on, number one, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the capital plan budget for Luzerne County.
Second.
Motion to the second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
unanimous.
Number two, motion to adopt the resolution to lease office space at 40 North Church Street, Hazelton, from the city of Hazelton.
So move.
Second. Motion to the second. Go ahead, Mr. McGinley.
So, everybody's had a little bit of concern with the, as the actual space use, etc. The property, you certainly got to use the space at some point, but until it's there won't be any space costs, whatever possible, whatever space we need to target. And as you mentioned, it's a very critical part of this magistrate's office that's currently there in the city of Hazelton. That's over 60-some thousand dollars. Rent increases hitting on top. That sort of will offset the cost.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley, anybody else for discussion?
Mr. Urban, I have one quick question, does city council of Hazelton have to approve? No.
No, they don't, as a matter of fact, correspondence was sent to the chair on October 31st. I can read it to you if you would. But there, a home rule, an optional plan, city, the role of city council is primary legislative, and they pass annual budget. The city is governed by the Hazelton City Code ordinance and section 11-26 of the city code contract administration for the city, which is typically vested in city council pursuant to the 35 city code, is vested in the mayor and the Department of Administration. That letter was sent by Attorney Watson, who represents the city of Hazelton.
Thank you.
Anybody else for discussion? Mr. McGinley, the public is asking, the microphone's on the thing, they want, they can't hear you. If you can just move her back, I know they want to hear you.
Okay.
I'm here.
Tim, that wasn't me. Alright, there's the motion to the second, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Alright, number three, motion to adopt resolution requesting a statewide local share account grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for Oak Hill Road.
Second.
Motion to the second.
I know, maybe.
But, Mr. McGinley.
This is a chance for us, for past years, we weren't able to access this one. Now the state has set up a system that the county can go directly to the state. In the past, we had to go through redevelopment authority. So I'm thrilled that this is now a fair amount more agenda for the county.
Thank you. There's a motion to the second, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Alright, number four, motion to adopt the resolution requesting a statewide local share account grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for Blythe Burn Road. Mr. Thornton and Ms. McDermott. Alright, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number five, motion to introduce an ordinance amending Article VI Administrative Code in accordance with the Home Rule Charter for Luzerne County, Pennsylvania. So, Mr. Urban, Mr. Wilovich.
On the question, I just want to thank 911, I've heard a lot of great things happening over there since new management's taken over. Glad he's moving in the right direction, I look forward to continuously moving in the right direction, I think this is a great step in that motion.
Alright, there's a motion to the second, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Number six, motion to adopt the resolution confirming the appointment of the Division Head of Budget and Finance.
Motion. Second.
And the individual, just for application of the public, is Mary Roselle, at a salary of $115,000 per year. Motion to the second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Roselle.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution approving the Commission on Economic Opportunities eligibility criteria for their ARPA funding utility heating assistance program. Motion by Mr. Thornton, second by Ms. McDermott. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Number eight, motion to adopt the resolution approving the establishment of a hotline in order to assist Luzerne County's local municipalities with issues stemming from increase in absentee landlords in Luzerne County.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell, second by Ms. McDermott. Roll call.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Number nine, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for road and bridge department repairs and maintenance projects.
Second.
Motion to the second, go ahead, Ms. Wilovich.
Original resolution divided in the packet was incorrect, that one says that we were taking the money from ARPA funds. We do have a corrective resolution, which is taking it from the ARPA interest, I just wanted to motion to make that amendment, so it can introduce the right.
Second amendment.
Motion for the amendment by Mr. Wilovich, second by Mr. McGinley. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence. I mean, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Wait. Roll call on the amendment, yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Okay, roll call on the, on the resolution itself.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Thank you. Alright, hold on, I have a public comment. Mr. Griffin.
Counsel Greg Griffin, Swarlesville. Agenda item seven. I plan to speak in public comment. Utility assistance, I think it was a great thing what the council did. You voted 2.5 million for utility assistance, and 2.5 million for home improvement installation for the CEO to administer. What's, what I'm hearing now is there's 900 on the list for home improvement, the CEO list. And many people who are not on the list, when the 2.5 million was given to the CEO, are not being accepted onto the list, so it's disappointing for seniors and disabled people and eligible homeowners that CEO is telling them, I'm sorry, we're not taking any more applicants. So there, there's 900 on the list, so it's an epidemic, and there could be a couple thousand more. And so what I would suggest to council, since we do have a legislative committee, and there is, from what I understand, a $5 billion surplus in Harrisburg, since council was concerned and did give 2.5 billion dollars to CEOs for home improvement. However, many people, after that 2.5 million was given, or is given now, there's a criteria being set up, are not going to be on the list. So what I'm asking council, the legislative committee, is to reach out to our state officials, state senators and state reps, and see if we can't get some more whole home, home improvement money to help the CEO get more people on the list. So this is the problem. You gave 2.5 million dollars. Most, most of the people who tried to get on the list after the 2.5 million was given, were told, sorry, you're out of luck. So this is disappointing. We have seniors with roof leaking, we have seniors with furnaces that are broke. They can't get help even though we gave 2.5 million dollars. So we need to, we need to reach out to our state reps and state senators and get some of that money from Harrisburg back. And help the CEO and there was 3.7 million from the whole home improvement program from the state that also got put into CEO's mind, so there's 5.7 million. It's, it's just gone. There's so much need out there, the infrastructure, the old homes are aging, seniors, working families are struggling. And so I would ask council to, with the infrastructure committee too, put your heads together and see if we can't lean on our state reps and state senators and get some more of this Harrisburg money back here for our Luzerne County citizens. It's definitely needed, and there's a lot of people we're told by CEO, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
I would just like to thank everybody for your continued support and confidence in us, especially Ms. Crapmo, Mr. Skeen, Mr. Kurtz, and Ms. McCora, and this council, thank you so much. I really do believe that we will do great things, and I do believe that we're moving in the right direction. And I just have to say that, I'm very fortunate and privileged to have such great employees at EMA and at ILO. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucy, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Alright, on the Zoom, we have Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple, just a couple of things to consider as you go into your work session. First of all, I want to congratulate Mary Roselle for her appointment to Budget and Finance. It's been an absolute joy working with that department since she's taken over. We've done great things in the short time that she's been there, and I'm looking forward to some more wonderful things as we do the payroll conversion and all the other things that we have on our plate to make the county a better place, so congratulations to her. The item number three on your agenda for Hotel Sterling project, we need to learn from history, not repeat it. We, we need to make sure that, you know, before council even considers a vote on this matter, that they do three things in this order. They need to get a letter from HUD stating that the $3 million in the U-DAG money can be allocated to the project to eliminate the penalty that was imposed on the county by the audit of the inspector general in 2015. The second item needs to be official letter from the developer that all funding has been required, except for the county portion of $3 million, and that they'll, he'll be responsible for a penalty if the project doesn't start on the required time. They need to get a firm and the unnegotiated date, no later than six months that the project will begin, and the appropriate penalty clause in the, if the developer fails to follow the prerequisite. Then and only then should council consider giving this project any funding. We saw what happened with the Hotel Sterling, I don't want to see it be repeated again with another project unintentionally. And all intentions are good for the project, but we need to make sure we put safeguards in place. And the last thing on your agenda for your work session is the Act 13 funding. We were notified this week that the Operations Division has turned off that water, so we will not get built for that water until we turn it back on again. If we need to turn it on for the fountain in the summer next year, that saves the county $500 a month. So kudos to the Operations Division for doing that and taking the proactive approach. So kudos to the Operations Division for doing that and taking the proactive approach to save the taxpayers approximately probably a couple thousand dollars in, in the next seven or eight months that we'll be paying that fee for nothing more than just to have the water there in the winter months when we'll never turn that fountain on. So thank you to everybody that was involved. They took the, the proactive approach from the audit, from the Controller's Office and they took care of, of saving the county money. So thank you so much. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. First of all, the, the legal opinion that was given to the county manager and to council by the city solicitor of Hazelton is at the very least misleading and at the very worst grossly inaccurate. I say this because under third class city code, it very well states that city council is in charge, is authorized in terms of approving leases, purchases and sales of city owned property. So if the city solicitor gave you that opinion, I'd like to see, I'd like to, I will get a copy of that. If I have to do a right to know, I will get a copy of that. And I would like to see that and I will send a copy of the, of the third class city code to the office of law, to the manager and to council because that legal opinion was either misleading or grossly inaccurate. Okay? That's all I'm going to say on that subject. Moving on to the court, the court presentation on their budget, I would hope that the council and and the manager would ask Mr. Highmarsh for current numbers on the reimbursements to the county by the, by the state legislature, especially on the translators because that was increased. And if there's any increase in the reimbursements that are going to be considered by the legislature in the future. Also with regards to the, the budget or excuse me, the road and bridge, I would hope that they would look into the grants, especially an increase in the raise grant for the bridges, for the county owned bridges. And also with respect to the corrections for the check valves. If Mr., Mr. Wilbur and Mr. Kurtz could look into the check valves that were, there was flaws in the check valves for the water at the prison. I do believe that there is a performance bond on that, on that work that was done, especially also with regards to the roof in the prison. So I don't know if that was looked into during the course of the year when that was brought up. So I hope that counsel could ask those questions. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Second by Mr. Liscavich, all in favor? Opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. It's 6:28. Let's start at 6:35. Yeah. Turn your mics off, counsel. It is 6:37. I'd like to call the work session to order. Pledge allegiance, moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Liscavich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Wolovich?
Here.
All right, thank you. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Motion.
Just quickly, the district attorney asked that he be moved ahead a little bit in the work session. So if it's okay with everybody, we're going to move number seven to number one.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right, sounds good.
I'll defer my time to gentlemen in the district attorney's office.
Motion by Mr. McGinley, second by Mr. Wolovich. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Agenda is adopted? All right, go ahead.
Do you want me to take the microphone? Good evening, members of council, Ms. Manager, Chief Solicitor, members of the public. Thank you so much for moving me first. Not, I didn't really want to go out of place, but I was out most of the night on that incident. Wilkes-Barre and early meeting this morning and somehow pulled a muscle in my back. So I'm trying to get out here as, as reasonably as possible. This is my opportunity to talk to you about our proposal. It's actually this year, a joint proposal with the county manager for our 2024 budget. I'm sure you will all recall that last year, the most major issue was the contract with the Teamsters, which we managed to get resolved and that has been a great relief to our office. I'm happy to report that in, you know, despite everyone seeing the costs of most items going up, we are well within our 2023 budget. That's thanks to my staff. They work every day to control costs, even sometimes when I'm not so careful, they remind me that I need to be more careful. Especially my fiscal clerk, Sherry Middleton, who keeps a close eye on expenses and works tirelessly to seek savings and new revenue, revenue sources. With respect to the 2024 budget, manager Crock, Crocker Mo and I worked very closely with the staff to try to keep it within the budget. Although she was a little stern in her quote request to do our best to hold the line. She didn't exactly order me, but she was very stern that she did not want to see expenses rise or revenues decrease. We actually succeeded in coming up with this proposal. As you know, the proposal doesn't seek an increase really in any way, although we have, we do have some, some major changes. If you look at our reg, revenue line items, I say this every year, but the DA's office is not a profit generating department. I'm sorry to say, I wish I was bringing in millions of dollars, but that's just not the way we work. We do what we can to shift the burden of certain costs to the defendants who commit, who commit the crimes and away from the taxpayers, most of whom have done nothing to deserve more expenses. Unfortunately, as you all know, many defendants are indigent, so the collection of any amount from them is impossible. If you look at section number 415.15, that is related to a central booking center. This idea was attempted many years ago, but unfortunately it could not be successful at that time. We're hoping to use some of our opioid money to defray some of the costs and get a center started. However, the Pennsylvania statutes allow us to actually generate income from the defendants who use this system. So far, we have had our plan, we've drafted a plan, we've submitted the plan to PCCD. The plan has been approved by them and the Chiefs of Police Association. The president judge has indicated his support of the plan. And I have submitted an administrative order to begin collecting this fee. Despite the fact that it will not be open for some time, we're allowed to collect the fee in advance. So we have money in the coffers for startup costs when the time comes to be ready. So I think that's a very positive development for us. It alleviates some of the problems we're having, as you can imagine, processing people all over the county. Not everyone gets processed the same way. Not everyone gets fingerprinted. It's a, a real burden when we have those problems. Not to mention, we're planning on staffing and paying overtime from those fees. So we will have police present to basically take a handoff of the arrestee. And the police patrolman can go back on the streets immediately rather than having to process them, wait with them, sometimes wait at the jail, take them to the hospital when they're intoxicated or under the influence of drugs or injured. So if this goes to plan, then I think it'll be, put a lot more police on the street for a lot longer and I'm very happy to report that. For 14.62 is our ARD collection fee. Based on our trend, you can see that that's, we're anticipating an increase of $15,000 to $135,000 for ARDs next year. Once again, while many of our defendants are indigent, this is one category. We have a, a great deal of success in collecting the fees. So I'm happy to report, you know, we believe that's a pretty reliable number. 415.63 is subpoenas. This is actually a drastic change due to the DA's association lobbying to change the Criminal History Records Information Act. That was an act that prevented civil attorneys from obtaining our files. As you can imagine, in cases that involve a lot of DUI car accidents or any criminal act involving some type of injury, it hampered us from giving away in, for relevant information that could help the plaintiff. And in my mind, just a criminal prosecution is not, you know, the, the end of their justice. Obviously, if they were injured and entitled to money for that, then they should get it or at least should be entertained by the civil process to see whether they warrant that money or not. This change in the law now allows us to collect a $250 processing fee. Whether we get a subpoena or a right to know request, we can treat it the same way. So this is, I believe, going to be a, a pretty decent increase in income just to process those documents. If you look at a comparison between 435.10 and 435.17, these are the PCCD grants relating to gun violence. You'll notice that they have eliminated the gun violence reduction grant. But we have obtained the gun violence prosecution initiative grant. And so we have 164,000, give or take, in anticipated disbursement, dispersment in 2024. That is not the total amount of the grant. That's the amount we anticipate receiving in 2024. I should also now note for the grant that's pending, we have asked to continue the collection because we were not able to use all the money. So there is another 80,000 hanging out there that we're hoping we will be able to additionally use in 2024. So that will actually be a net increase in gun, total gun violence grants. 445.10 is opioid settlement funds. Obviously, we haven't obtained any of that money yet. It's hanging out there. We assume that will come to fruition in 2024. So we're looking forward to being able to get our plans under that grant going. If you look under the expense categories, you'll recall that wages pretty much for everybody changed significantly. So that was a, a big difference in what we were anticipating and what we have planned. Most of them were due to union contracts. Most of them were due to union contracts. If you look at five twenty point ten, the represented wages, those increases are due to the calculations according to the contract. Five ten point fifteen, unrepresented wages. The reason for that increase is, as you can imagine, when the represented employees had a drastic increase, their supervisors were making less than they were, encouraging them to leave. So obviously, the adjustments that we had to make or would also be matching adjustments. And unfortunately, that took some months to get into place, so they actually went at least six months without getting a substantial raise and making less than most of their people that they were supervising. We also have, I think we've talked about it many times, the Burn Justice Assistant Grant, Assistance Grant, which we got great help from Congressman Cartwright in obtaining its two point five million dollars. We still have not gotten that money, I'm anticipating getting it early in 2024 for our emergency services unit and various other plans we have in place. That really has no effect on the budget, that's all grant money that will come in and out. I don't really have anything else unless there are questions based on the documents.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
In that case, just let me congratulate Mary on your new position. I'm looking forward to working, continuing to work with her. And if I might take just one more minute to thank our outgoing members of council. I, I know, I'd like to think that we worked well together. I know the public, much of the public doesn't watch what goes on here, but hopefully, everybody learns to appreciate the hard work that goes into attempting to run this county. And even though you don't always agree, and I don't necessarily always agree with you, I hope that people know you're trying to do the right thing. So that's, you know, our outgoing members, Mrs. Vogue, Mr. Venus, Mr. McGinley, Mr. Mitchell, and Mr. Urban. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. All right. Receive and discuss division reports.
First, I'd like to formally welcome Mary to our executive team. I'm thrilled to have her on board. Confident that was her expertise and leadership. She's going to greatly contribute to the continued success of the county. She's already had a very positive impact on the county, spending years being the director of our area agency on aging and just providing top notch service for our elderly population. I can guarantee you, Mary will bring a fresh perspective and new ideas to the table. And so Mary, welcome. I also want to introduce Attorney Joseph Jager, who is the interim Chief Public Defender. I've known Joe for decades. He has been in the public, public defender's office. Should I tell them how long, Joe, or? Forty-four years. And the short time period that he has been in this acting role, we've hired two new public defenders. One, there's another application pending, and he has rearranged the schedule that is going to really enhance the representation in the public defender. And I'm going to thank him for coming up to the plate and hitting a home run. So I also want to report the budget and finance team and our administrative services, Jim Pocora and Human Resources, along with the county controller, have been working tirelessly on our transition into the world. It's going to pay off, we're going to have substantial savings and be more efficient. And they really are dedicated to this. And the final product, it's going to be something that the county can be very proud of. I also want to report that we are reevaluating and reviewing our purchasing policies once again with administrative services and with the assistance of the controller, Walter Griffin. So I wanted to thank all of them for all the time, effort, and knowledge that's needed to these programs.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement amendment between Luzerne and Wyoming County Area Agencies on Aging and the Greater Hazleton Senior Citizen Services Incorporated for an active adult center located at twenty-four East Broad Street, Hazleton, PA.
Mary has been acting, continuing to act as director of aging, wearing the two hats. So, Mary, you're aging.
Okay. We've been in the Active Adult Center that we're in currently in Hazleton for twenty-five years. The lease agreement that we're proposing to be renewed is for six thousand five hundred square feet. There's a modest increase of five percent over the two-year period of that, a two-year option to renew and an additional five percent. The center serves around thirty individuals every day, you know, we serve a hot meal at noon. We have a lot of activities, we do trips, you know, at different events at the center. It really is a beautiful location, and the people that we do rent from, the board in Hazleton, has an absolutely amazing job at upgrading the center and getting some grants through the city of Hazleton and some other opportunities to really revamp the entire center. So it really is beautiful, if no one has seen it, you know, I would definitely suggest you take a look if you're up in that area. But I can answer any questions, isn't anybody? Well, you can go, you can go at any age, absolutely. However, if you want to receive services, you know, without paying the full cost, it's sixty.
See, you're going to learn saying free meal.
There's a suggested donation, but, but anyone can go. So like if you're, they always, they always play bingo. So we have a lot of really like great activities, we have pool tables, we have air hockey tables, we have all kinds of stuff like that, but we never take away bingo because bingo is very important.
Mary Tubman is champion of air hockey.
Okay, I'm gonna, I may have been beat by the county manager several times. I may not be a great air hockey player, but hopefully have a better budget and finance person than I am an air hockey player. Definitely.
That's great.
Yeah. It is, yes, it's a hundred percent covered by state funds.
Anything else? All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have the Hotel Sterling project.
First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us this continuation to come in and further explain the project and answer any questions that maybe you have. And to that end, Mr. Chairman, we've brought our team of professionals that are involved in the project so that if you have any really detailed, specific questions, hopefully we'll be able to answer them and satisfy them. But just, just a couple of comments. You know, this project is probably the largest private investment that is going to be made in Wilkes-Barre, probably in the last forty years. And, you know, trying to do it under difficult economic times is a challenge, and that's why we're here. So I hope you'll give us, you know, fair consideration on this, and hopefully we can do something quite dramatic and important for the, for the city itself. Housekeeping matter, there was a question asked at the last meeting to me if we had letters of support. Well, I guess we do. I have, I have them up, I can give them to you, you know, if you want them at this meeting or afterwards. From, first of all, from Congressman Cartwright, from Mayor Brown, from the President of King's College, Father Looney, the President of Wilkes University, Dr. Kent. We have Guard Insurance, which is the largest employer in Wilkes-Barre, Service Center, which employs over five hundred and fifty people in Wilkes-Barre as well. So I have those, if anybody wants to see them. Also, now, I'd just like to introduce, and we're going to have a short program, but, but hopefully we'll be able to get to some of your points. The first person on the team that we, that we have is, is a fellow named Jason Fitzgerald, who is the president of Penn Strategies. And he's, he's helping us with the public financing portion of this project, because this project is going to require a certain amount of public financing to succeed. So Jason, if I can, if you'd mind coming over and just saying a few words and introducing yourself.
Thank you, members of council, madam manager, chief clerk, members of administration, the public. Jason Fitzgerald with Penn Strategies, we work throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on securing grant and low interest loan funding for, in many instances, municipalities, colleges, various institutions of higher learning, school districts, we represent some counties as well. In this case, we're part of the project team for what I think is a very exciting project for this part of the Commonwealth in Wilkes-Barre and Luzerne County. As far as regionally, one of the more high profile projects that we worked on was the Kalahari Water Park in Tobyhanna Township. So we assisted with, with the public private, you know, partnership there and working along with both the developers of the Kalahari Resort and then also the officials in Tobyhanna Township in Monroe County. And of course, that is a project that we helped to make some projections on, on its success. And we're happy to report that not only has it been successful, but they're actually looking to expand it. Their room capacity is, it exceeds ninety percent on a regular basis, and they're looking to actually expand that facility. So the township and the county formed a nice partnership there, and we were part of making sure that, you know, the grant funding was in place and also making sure, you know, we have an entire division that deals with grant administration to make sure that the, in this instance, the development group follows all of the compliance guidelines that are required in order to, to receive the grant funds. So it's a privilege to be here and work on this great team and say hello, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
You did mention low interest loans, would it be possible to structure this three billion into low interest loans?
Is it possible to structure the?
To borrow three billion from the county as a loan?
You'd have to talk to legal counsel about that, my apologies, sir, I, I wouldn't, I don't know the details of that. Typically, these are done as grants, I don't know what the county's legal abilities are relative to.
From your perspective, would that be something you guys would consider?
I'm not, I'm not in a position to answer that. I'm, my job is to secure.
You brought up, you look out for grants and loans as well.
Grants and loans, correct, yes, but, but that, that's not my area of expertise, forget it.
We can't address that.
But I'm, I'm, I can't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Any other questions from members of council?
What's the total amount of public funds that have been granted to this project so far?
I think it's approximately seven million.
What are those sources?
We could get you a list of all the sources, I know DCED, RACP is one of them. And there are other sources, I think that may actually.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a single source right now, and it's the redevelopment assistance program.
It's all, it's all RACP, all redevelopment assistance capital program funding, et cetera.
We're applying for other dollars. It's just that we haven't heard yet, we have a couple submissions, and, you know, we'll be talking to the governor and trying to get some additional help. Now, as I mentioned, you know, we've gone through some difficult, we're going through some difficult economic times. Now, inflation's high, you know, the costs of inflation has impacted construction. So we're looking for every possible way to get this project done. And without your support and the support of others, it'll be very difficult to do.
If you look at projects throughout the Commonwealth, this is not the only project that has run into these issues. There are a lot of projects throughout the Commonwealth because of the changing interest rate structures, et cetera, with, with banks. But I mean, when this thing is done, it will have a significant positive impact on the city of Wilkes-Barre and Luzerne County. Any other questions from members of council? Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation, we have PowerPoint by our architects, Hemler Kamad, Brian Dorn, principal of the company. We'll just take it through very quickly.
Did you, did you send a PowerPoint presentation to clerk or council or?
I did, yes, last night.
I did not receive anything.
I received confirmation that it was received.
My assistant, did we pass it on to I T?
Is it, is it prepared that we can, it's good? Okay, all right. Yeah.
Yes.
We'll just need a copy of it afterwards for the, for me, if you want to just have it sent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
While they're getting it up, I have a question, Mr. Baru. Just for reaffirmation purposes, for the county, is not taxpayer money of Luzerne County residents, correct? Isn't it from that UDED fund that was given to the county some ten years ago that we're still sitting on? That was given to us from?
That was the Urban Development Action Grant Program.
UDED.
Paybacks that came into the county that are generally unrestricted.
Because I, that, that's come up to me. And I always say, I'm generally not in favor of giving Luzerne County taxpayer money to private developers outright by giving them, you know, give them alert, alertism, tax breaks, things like that, but not getting millions of dollars over the side.
The original UDED program designed by HUD was a grant loan program. So, so these funds, you know, could be used as grants or loans, you know, when the program was acted during the nineteen seventies and eighties. So the funds that you have are proceeds that were paid back from, from business loans that were made up back in the seventies and eighties and have been, you know, held in reserve here.
And it's still sitting here in the county, my understanding. And it's my understanding that your group is going ahead with this project as a means to simply complete what was started some ten years ago there on that site, was never completed. And I believe the UDED fund that's sitting there was specifically denoted for that site with restrictions such as creating permanent jobs, creating temporary jobs, and things like that.
The county, when they participated in the redevelopment of the Sterling Hotel, was a really meritorious undertaking on their part. Now, there's the six million dollars, I believe, that went into that project, you know, paid for a lot of things, but mostly probably was the environmental remediation. And, you know, and that was quite a bet. Now, whether those funds were spent properly or not over the long haul, we have no idea, that was another entity that was involved. But, you know, we'd like to finish that project now, and this is an opportunity, maybe the only opportunity within, you know, the near future to get this thing done, because it's been worked on for thirty years. And what do we have out there now is, is just a empty site.
Okay, excuse me.
We could skip to the next, to the couple, next couple of slides if we could. By, the, the, these are just the introductory slides, Penn Strategies already spoke. So if we go to the next slide, please. So the project, as we all know, is strategically located and in a very prominent location at the corner of River and Market Street, right adjacent to the Market Street Bridge. It's, it's adjacent to the central business district. You can see the proximity to King's College, proximity to Wilkes University, which Mr. Baruk mentioned letters of support from. And there's also good proximity to the courthouse where we stand today. So the, the site itself is very, very good in terms of its connectivity to, to, you know, be supported as well as support the downtown environment. Next slide, please. So at the corner of Market and River sits a complex, a mixed-use complex that's proposed comprising of three major components. A hotel, which will be under the Hyatt brand, an event center, as well as retail spaces, and then supporting spaces for the, the primary components. As the site sits on, as the building sits on the site at that intersection, down along Market Street, we have introduced an urban garden that is adjacent to and access from Market, and then we are bringing some greenscape around the front along River Street as well. Oh, and there's also a parking garage. So the, the stats for the project are, there is two hundred and twenty-five spaces proposed onsite for parking to support the project. The hotel, five stories, a hundred and sixteen rooms, there's approximately three thousand plus square feet of retail space. There's approximately three thousand plus square feet of retail space proposed. The event space is approximately five thousand square feet. This is the fir-, oh, yeah, you go to the next slide. Thank you. This is the first floor plan enlarged from the site plan, so we can see the, the garden right adjacent to what would be off of Market Street. That acts as a primary entrance to the hotel. It will also act as breakout space and outdoor activity space for the, for the event space as well. The purple space that's out on the corner is basically pre-function area. The green space that you see to the upper right-hand corner, that's the main kitchen for the facility. And then the blue space central to it is the, is the main hotel space. The other spaces are backup house spaces that are in the beige to the right-hand side. The pink spaces are the retail spaces that I just mentioned. Go to the next slide, please. Okay, so this is our second floor plan. The purple space is the event space, again, approximately five thousand square feet. Can seat up to three to three hundred fifty people. It will be outfitted for all sorts of events, whether it's conferencing, could be weddings, it could be any number of different types of events, lectures, whatever the case may be. And then adjacent to that, to the left, the green is the, what's the beginning of the hotel rooms for, again, under the Hyatt brand, combination of kings and queen suites that will then go up for the next four stories. We can go to the next slide. These are the upper-level floor plans, repetitive because it is a hotel. So, we can go to the next slide is, again. These are the proposed concept renderings that we're working with to date. We are trying to develop a building that speaks to Wilkes-Barre so that it works with the urban scale. We are trying to also develop this so it ties well to adjacencies like buildings next door, picks up on certain architectural features. And again, trying to utilize materials in a way that celebrates the corner and the intersection. See, we have a tower on the corner, which is all glass at this point. That would be a highlight of the, the project. And that's, that's actually inside that main event space. As you can see down on the corner, there is also an area that can spill out to the intersection which could be, you know, again, more outdoor seating. The rendering on the right is the Market Street view. That's the primary view of the hotel along with the, the landscape, the urban garden. Go to the next slide, please. We have an aerial view to the left and then the courtyard view to the right. So, that's standing inside that, again, that urban, that urban garden space, again, could be for breakout, breakout functions. Again, you know, the overall building square footage is nearing a hundred thousand square feet. It is a very large-scale ambitious project. So, I can entertain any questions you may have at this point.
I have a question. With an accounting degree, I have a big outlook on return on investment. So, I was curious as to, we have an idea of the property values and how much tax you have to ask for each individual.
Yeah, I'm the architect, not the finance guy, so I can't speak to that stuff. I can't speak to that, so. I mean, we, I could tell, and, and those questions may be able to be answered, but I can tell you that in terms of the project cost and what we've been doing as a result of pandemic and the time that we've been working on this, which has been a number of years, we've come up with a very efficient and very, I think, a design that, that works for not only the hotel, but the event, the event space. It was, it has evolved over the years, and I think right now we have a, we have a project that, that will work.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Very quickly, I was just wondering, do we have an official start date for this project, assuming that everything were to go through? I may be asking the wrong individual, but I'm just curious. Is there a plan on the start date, assuming that the funding is secured?
Like I said, our goal, our goal is, is the twenty twenty-four is gonna be the year for us to get this thing started. And a lot depends, you know, on our financing. We get, you know, this, we have, we're subject also to the state in terms of some consideration on some other programs and then the final financing with the bank, which has to be resolved. Once we have all these other grants and everything worked out, then we talk to the banks and get the thing done. But our goal, if we want to get this thing done, it's been, it's been going out for five years and it's time to do one. And we're hoping that twenty-four is, is our year. I can't give you a month, it'll be the year.
If everything were to work and we were to be cut loose schedule-wise, we could be in the ground by the spring easily.
Speaker Dermot.
I have a question about feasibility study. Has anyone done a feasibility study?
Yeah, we have somebody on the agenda for that too. Two speakers down, we'll be talking marketing and feasibility that, you know, hopefully we can.
Did you have that? Would you have feasibility study?
Yes. Next, our, our, our next speaker is George Albert from Albert Engineering. And he's been our civic engineer on the site, and he can really tell you a few things about, about the site itself and some of the issues related to it. But we moved on a number of fronts with respect to getting the, the city approvals in place.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time. My name is George Albert. We've been tasked with the due diligence and engineering feasibilities, planning and permitting for this project. And just to give you a quick rundown of what we've done, we've conducted a intensive geotechnical study on this site, including a lot of borings to determine what we're dealing with on the property. We've encountered some unforeseen conditions with the subsurface properties that are located out there which have impacted the cost of this project to the tune of about two and a half million dollars in subsurface remediation that's needed to build this facility. In addition to that, we've conducted all of our survey work, our property boundary survey work, our topography, utility locations, et cetera. We've determined utility feasibilities with regard to this property and have come to the conclusion that the site can be served and developed with available utilities that exist on, on the site today. In addition, we've gone through the zoning approvals with the city of Wilkes-Barre and secure those. We've also gone through the land development process with the city of Wilkes-Barre to secure the proper land development, land planning approvals for this, this particular property. In addition to that, we've conducted extensive engineering studies on cost analysis with regard to the parking garage and development of the property as well and have secured comfortable numbers with regard to those commitments as well. So, all of that due diligence has been completed. And essentially, Steve had mentioned, we're, we're ready to go to develop this property once the financial and financing packages are complete. So, I'm here to answer any questions on the site feasibility with regard to this project that council may have.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next person is Eric Urbino. And he represents Extreme Hospitality, which is a SCRAM-based company that operates on a national basis with hotel feasibility, marketing and consulting in general. So, Eric.
Thank you, members of council. Good to be with you guys tonight. Our firm is a hotel management and consulting firm. We, we're the third-party operator for this property and we conducted on behalf of the developers market studies, financial investment projections as well. Our experience is national. We've done business in thirty-four states, worked over a hundred and fifty properties nationwide. I specifically work on the acquisitions and development team, where we underwrite investments for both development and acquisition deals. And I can answer any questions you guys have relating to the market study and the feasibility of the project.
If you have a feasibility study, can we get a copy of that?
That's up to ownership, if they, what they would like to dispose with, with council.
Okay, that's something you pay for, I guess, if it's proprietary, you wouldn't want that all over the place.
It's a study that's put together to, to develop on what type of investment they're making in the market. So, by making it public, it then opens up proprietary competitors to act on the information that's in that study.
I guess council probably wants to feel comfortable, or not comfortable, with how feasible the project.
Sure.
That's, you answer to that.
So, I have a question. I believe before it was mentioned that Gus Giannetti's had a seventy-five percent occupancy rate, and that's not accurate. He'd say about fifty percent at best. And I do have an occupancy report that shows that for like the last twelve months at forty-seven point two percent occupancy. So, that's low. And for a hotel to be successful, you would want seventy to seventy-two percent.
That's, that's correct. I can't speak to the specifics of that property as I'm not privy to their proprietary information. But what we do is we use a company called Smith Travel Research, and they're a global company that takes data from hotels, their occupancy and their average rate on a nightly basis, and they aggregate it and they, they make it confidential so that you can look into the market to see what's, what it's performing at. If you look at the Wilkes-Barre market, they're performing above seventy percent annually in occupancy, and the average rate is above a hundred and thirty dollars annually. Also have properties in the local market that I'm familiar with, brands we work with. And they've indicated to me that some properties are doing as high as eighty-five percent with rate well exceeding a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty dollars on average.
See, that's a report I would like to see just because that's totally.
And that's, that STAR report is definitely something that we can share with you. That's something that, because it's anonymized and that is proprietary that we purchase it, but we can definitely share that with you, so you can see that and see what those sub-markets are doing. The specific references that I made, that information I can't share publicly, but definitely can speak to what we've been.
Yes, it's the building, they're not going to be staying.
It makes no sense, right?
But also, another concern would be about event space. So, a lot of that is lost from downtown Wilkes-Barre to the casino. And so, you know, I'm worried about the, the use of an event space, conference area.
It's an excellent question. So, the, the way a lot of corporations will look at casino space and casino hotel rooms and event space is that they won't allow their associates to stay and they won't allow for corporate events to be held on it. We see that nationally with a lot of Fortune corporations, Fortune five hundred, Fortune one hundred companies, et cetera, have those type of mandates in place. With this, events that we'll be going after, much smaller than what the casino is going after, but being more focused on intimate events. And while we can host everything from a corporate event, but to a wedding with an elevated space overlooking the River Commons, et cetera, it gives us the ability to go after a smaller, more intimate. But additionally, what this project is poised to do is to benefit from the Iron Temple project, you know, located next door, where they have a very big renovation project. And what happens in order to go after that mid-level association business that exists in the Commonwealth and in the region requires you to have a city-wide atmosphere. When those regional planners are looking to host properties, they're not looking for one specific property. They're looking for a market that can sustain them for the room nights they have to generate, as well as the breakout space amongst multiple properties. So, by having people, having properties like the casino, having properties like the Iron Temple coming on board, and then having a project like this coming on board, it'll, it will allow the area as a whole to go after larger pieces of business that right now are turning to Scranton, Reading, Harrisburg, et cetera, and, and not taking a look here.
Okay, oh, just one last thing. I think what, what, because I'm confused as to exactly how much money you need, how much you have, what's coming from where, and there's a lot of questions on, we may get the money, we may get the money, we may get the money. Is there something itemized that you could give us that would say, this is exactly what we have, this is what we need, this is what we're hoping for from you? Because I'm just trying to write it down. I don't, I don't even know where to begin with that.
Yeah, if ownership has certain documents that they've been willing to make available, we can definitely spell out more clearly for you so you can see our closed capital stack and, you know, what we're trying to do to get to the finish line. I think to your point, it's worthwhile to mention that, you know, when we talk about that capital stack and we talked about, you know, looking for, you know, public assistance and getting this project to the finish line, the public assistance isn't being sought after to make a development deal a lucrative investment. It's being sought after to make it a bankable and financeable deal. The vast majority of money that needs to come into this project is through debt financing. So, the project can only support so much debt financing based on the levels that the institutions put for their debt service coverage ratios. So, what the goal of seeking public investment on this project is, is to get to that level so that the, the financiers, the lending institutions can get comfortable making that investment in the area. So, that's really what that goal is. I think that's an important point to make.
Mr. Mitchell, then, Mr. Scavenger.
Do you have any idea of the estimated economic impact downtown or the county as a whole?
Yes, you know, it's been said and reported in studies that for every dollar generated in a hotel revenue, it equates to about seven dollars in regional economic activity. That number's not adjusted for inflation. So, if you look at a project like this, you're looking at regional economic activity in excess of fifty million dollars annually. That's jobs, that's, you know, the direct jobs, indirect jobs, temporary construction jobs, jobs being created by vendors, people coming to the area, spending money at gas stations, shopping in local downtown districts, et cetera. The money compounds quite vastly when the money's brought in through tourism dollars and leisure and business travel.
Is that a general prosperous city, a port city, and a slow, a lot of cities working, performing now? So, the economic conditions downtown, I'm sure it's ideal.
Yeah, so that number, again, not being adjusted for inflation is based on a national average. And what we see is the SCRAM Wilkes-Barre area tends to compete at the national average in most categories. So, I think it's a fair number to use as a baseline.
Mitchell Scavenger.
So, if I hear you correctly, we give this money, some other people give some money, and then you can go to the bank, get the balance based on what you have to collect.
Yeah, yes, to clarify a little further on your point, the, those conversations have started with the lenders. We know what the lenders are looking for, so we're working backwards from that conversation. It's not that it hasn't happened, yes.
So, and this is only my opinion. We're sitting in the county seat here, which is Wilkes-Barre. And if we want things to grow, we gotta be positive. We gotta put some money to it. It, it's my opinion that if this Iron Temple thing takes off, which I believe it will, because we serve a lot of money for that, ready, people are gonna need a place to stay downtown. And for us to push them to the outskirts of town, to stay somewhere else or the Scranton, the different areas you mentioned, is kind of a fluke. So, I, I personally think that's in our best interest as this county to put up a beautiful building like that. I think that the money that started this project, it all should go. Somehow we start out talking three million, then it gets down to two million. I think if it's five point five or five point three, then that whole dollar amount you go to this project. Because then what we're doing with U-DAG is we're finishing what started ten years ago. And I do believe if somebody's willing to take on a project like this and put a beautiful hotel in downtown Wilkes-Barre, because I would love to sit down with Mayor Brown and a few other people. I told the manager this, I have a lot of ideas. It could be right, wrong, or indifferent. But in order to grow this area, we all got to sit down and talk and get together and promote what we have. We have a great square. There's some things that belong, there's some things that don't, and I said that publicly, that don't belong. But we can, I believe, we can make this like the next up-and-coming Lancaster. If people have been to Lancaster, they have some nice micro breweries, I'll say, that I die. They have some nice wineries, they have some nice coffee shops, some bakeries. It's, it's the things that have to happen to make it a good downtown or a good city. So, I think if this were one of the things that could help push this along, which I, I believe it would, we have a beautiful riverfront. We host three concerts, we can make it six. At the, I said this before too, at the Kirby Center, not every show has to be two hundred dollars or a buck and a half. It could be a tribute band for thirty dollars. There's other venues out there doing it and they're packed every weekend. And there's people going to Jim Thorpe for that reason every weekend, because they have affordable shows at Ben's Beach and they have them at their theater. So, I think in order to accomplish some of these things, we, we gotta put some things around it. And this, I think, is one of the things that's neat.
Yeah, and Councilman, I think you made a lot of great points, and one specifically is that the success of a project like the Iron Temple, having the services of a hotel nearby will be critical to its ability to, to book itself.
And succeed.
And succeed.
Uh, Mr. Lovich.
Well, I second going off the hotel occupancy. I mean, I know one of the things you brought up in the past, a place to stay for your parents for different holidays. Well, one of the colleges bought a hotel that had conferences, so apparently there was no meat there at the time. So, I don't know, you have a study on what kind of people would be using.
Yeah, and, and I can speak to that a little bit. That project that they purchased, which was a former Ramada, I believe, right? That was a project that was built in the eighties, if I recall. And if you look at the history of hotels that around the eighties, in the eighties, were when hotels stopped being developed in downtowns. And in the early nineties, you saw the, the birth of the interstate properties, the Holiday Inn Expresses, the Hampton Inn's of the world. And that's where development really went before the next twenty years, from nineties through the, the early two thousands. And what happened is, as those people were leaving the downtowns that became more crime-infested during the eighties, they, they focus on interstate and suburb properties where people could feel more comfortable. They could pull up into a lighted parking lot and easily access their vehicle. What we've seen in the past ten years or so is that the millennial traveler, who's now in the business force and now traveling for corporate, for corporate reasons and leisure, et cetera, they're seeking a property that is located in the downtown. They like the idea of being able to stay where they're doing business. So, especially in Wilkes-Barre, it's very interesting that the core demand generators in the business market, the Berkshire Guards of the World, the county seat, the government business, it's all taking place on Public Square, but the properties, the. But the properties, the where the associates are visiting from are forced to travel to the interstate to stay in those properties because the development in the downtown hasn't kept up with where the travel trends have gone. So basically, what we're doing is seeing that there is a need in the market for that, where the demand generators to run the occupancies that our reports from third parties show that they're staying out at the interstate is quite incredible. Pre-COVID, the market was doing eighty percent occupancy, right? That's an incredible number. So to see that they're performing at that level, you can't build that demand based on where those hotels are, right? We all know where they're at out by the arena. There's not eighty percent of occupancy and business happening out there, right? That's coming from the downtown core district and the demand generators of colleges that you mentioned. So I think that it's just that shift in travel trend. And I know it's been mentioned in this meeting that, you know, the downtown hasn't kept up with those times and those trends. And this is the project to bring us back to that level and bring that traveler back into the downtown given the auction.
I could be incorrect, but I believe there was another hotel project that they talked about downtown Wilkes-Barre across from around the theater. That's still in progress, isn't it? I talked about a while ago, uh, an issue with the property owners, right? Process, we might believe it's.
I know, one of South Main Street.
You're talking the Spirit project in North Hampton.
Not much. We've talked about hotels in the city for many years. I just.
I think that one, you still have some litigation going on from a property down there.
Would that be competition for you?
Sure, a- any hotels competition, but what we find is based on the occupancy levels in this market, you can definitely support two, maybe three hotels. And what we see is when you cluster hotels together, the way you see at the arena, you get what's called induced demand. So when you cluster hotels together, instead of seeing occupancy decrease, it actually increases because it becomes a destination for staying and booking. So you'll see more people getting off the exit and choosing that as a reason to stay in that district. So having the ability to induce demand in the downtown will be positive for the first couple of hotels that do make that investment in the area.
Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I just want to expand, this is for council's consideration, not necessarily the gentleman podium. I want to expand on Mr. Scavenger's comments. If this U-Dag money, and I believe it was specifically designated for that site. And one of the criteria was it had to create permanent jobs. It behooves us, if we're going to go ahead with this, to not give the three, but give the whole five million or five point whatever. So that we don't break it up and use, let's say we give them three and we kept two million and we repaired roads or bridges and built built or replaced air conditioning units on county owned buildings. Well, that's not producing permanent jobs. And that's something I think we could get in hot water over. Rather than just, I I'd like to see if we go ahead with this and 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 we all approve it and vote. That's the whole remaining fund to use for that project so that we wash our hands of it. It was all devoted to that site and then we move on. So that the alternative is if we don't do this, that dirty dust bowl there on the corner could stay there for another ten years. And I don't believe a a a dusky, dirty site with no buildings is generating much of the way of taxes right now. So the end game is to do nothing and then we sit with it for another five or ten years. And future council bodies have to discuss and discuss and discuss it. So that my opinion is we're gonna go ahead and do it. Give the whole five million and be done. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Scavenger, and then Mr. McGinnley.
You know, the other point I want to make is five million or five point three, whatever dollar. If you go back ten years ago, that was, that was a substantial amount of money. You look at today, it probably the real value that might be two, two point two today's dollars with the cost of the increase for construction. So I just want to make everybody aware of that, that it's not quite the windfall that it was ten years ago. And and also, I traveled for thirty-seven years with my job and I got to tell you, not that there isn't some nice hotels on interstate up there. But doing it for thirty-seven years, I tended to stay away from them only because you got the interstate traffic and you know, a lot of the more nice people stay at those hotels. Even though they were nice hotels, they weren't the kind of people you want to be next door to. So you kind of shy away from them.
Mr. McGinnley.
Yeah, there's been a couple statements saying that money was the hotel store. Same, right? Money was there long before the hotel store project came on board. Money for the hotel store, it sold six million dollars, went to another entity, saw what happened to the hotel. It was a group on, do all the studies, it all collapsed. So this money was not intended for the hotel store. Several funds, there much of.
Uh, Ms. McDermott.
Again, I'm just going to go back to the, I I just don't even know what the amounts, the dollar amounts are. So I'm, you know, the vote whenever it comes up until I see I can't make an educated yes or a vote rather. I can't, I can't do that because I don't even know where the money's coming from. If it's guaranteed, you know, it's just a lot of stuff we need to know about it.
Did anybody bring their, because I didn't bring with me the packet that I passed out at the last meeting? I believe in there we had some, some of those numbers.
Very small, but it was not very detailed. I don't believe. Maybe it was one short page, but it's big.
And that's usually what our capital stack looks like. That's what we present to our lenders as well. So that would.
I wasn't here the last.
We could definitely get that. And what it does is it breaks down by source where the the money's coming from. And and how the monies would flow into the project. And in that sheet, you can see, it shows very nicely on what our goal is in trying to get to a debt service coverage ratio. It is a financialable, financeable deal. So we can definitely make that available to you. And I'm I'm happy to make myself available with ownership to to be with you guys and I'll explain it as well.
Again, another question I have, it seems like it's mostly all about public funding. How much private funding is that?
We're going to, the money says, we, because if we get to the point in terms of the financing, we're going to be borrowing fifty, plus twenty million dollars in this project. That's a considerable obligation on part of the developers. In terms of private equity going into the project, that's, I hesitate revealing that kind of information publicly, but it's just under two million.
So there's.
So we'd be getting more of this one agreement than you've raised prior.
Well, that's how equity in projects is not the majority of the financing, probably ninety-eight percent of these projects. Equity is a percentage, could be a, you know, a total project.
Yeah, so there there is a a seven figure private investment going into the project in addition to the, at the point Steve's trying to make is that with the debt being secured, that will require ownership to sign on to personal guarantees. So they'll be putting up their financial viability, you know, essentially for a good duration of their lives in order to to back this project and get it done. So it's a decision that the developers don't make lightly, signing on to twenty plus million dollars with the debt.
Mr. Thornton. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I worked in banking in this region for thirty, thirty-one years at several large banks in the area. And I can tell you the way banking works is is that state. If they're going to loan money to a private group like this to develop a site, they want to see certain pledges of the other monies first. They, banks don't take risks. They don't like taking any risk. So if we sit here and say, well, we want to see and guarantee all the other money is in place before we pledge ours. That's never going to happen. That's not how development works. That doesn't work that way anywhere in the country that I know of. If they're looking for funding from six different sources, say, one of them being the bank with the twenty million and the other sixteen, seventeen million from the other five sources. The other five sources have to pledge first. And and they have to have that in place before they ever go to a bank and say, this is what we need. So that that's where we're at with that. But that's just how development works.
I concur.
Go ahead, Ms. Perry.
Real quickly. Looking at everything that presented us, it's it's a, it's a great idea. Most of you, there's certainly a big blue bar area. The question comes down for us, do we have permission to use this money? That's a big question mark. Did anybody, I mean, did, they say we can use it? I mean, if we don't have permission to use it, this is, this is. We got a legal opinion on that, but. We got a support. Mentioned that. I also know that possession is my intention.
One, one thing that I would like to see, I know that we've talked a little bit about like feasibility studies and some of the documentation that you can share with council privately because of the proprietary information on it. But one thing I would like to see is to make some version of that available to the public as well, since, you know, this money is technically coming from the public in a way. So, you know, we want them to be able to take a look at some of this documentation, some of this feasibility study so that they can, you know, put their minds a little bit more at ease so that, you know, we can have a positive result on this project.
So just looking at the full picture too, the U-Dag money was a pot of money in the in this county that's basically just sitting there. It was used basically as an insurance policy for that HUD project in the past, right? So that's a different pot. We're utilizing it or saving it probably in a very low interest bearing account too. If we had in a higher interest account, we probably would have a lot more money than five point seven million at this point. But regardless, that money is is there to be used as an insurance policy to potentially pay the obligation to HUD if they say, you know, loser in county, you owe us the six million for doing a crappy job in the past. Pay us now. I don't see HUD. And I had the same conversation with Nadav, just like Walter may have had. But, you know, that U-Dag is unrestricted. If we set it aside for payment on it on a bad audit, why not use it to show HUD that we're going to use it for economic development on that same exact site? I don't see a federal government agency coming in here and hammering loser in county. Once we fulfill the obligation of creating economic development, creating jobs and creating a future opportunity for Wilkes-Barre. You know, that the 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 small investment of five point seven million dollars or five point six is going to generate probably ten, twenty, maybe a hundred fold in economic development in the future, you know. I I think, you know, that muddy bowl, I mean, there's no restriction on that site at this point where, you know, they turn around and sell it to Kings or Wilkes. It's going to go completely non-taxable. And we won't get a dime for that property and very little development downtown. Let's look at the sense of, I mean, like you put a hotel up, parents, students are going to use it because it's in walking distance. Restaurants downtown, I've talked to like Frank Raddano and other people downtown. They would, obviously, they they would support it because it's going to help their businesses. You've got other businesses going downtown. You just saw an announcement from from Mayor Brown recently. Another business is going downtown. A lot of these establishments are going to bring people in that want a decent place to stay. You know, and and I'm friends with Tom Brekko too. I mean, Jeannetti's is dated, is very dated. Most people, my friends that have been traveling nurses that come back into this area will not stay in a dirty place. They have the money, they can afford to stay at a Hyatt, they can go to the casino, they can go up to East Mountain Inn. You know, they'll travel at other places to stay at a nicer place and pay for it. I think it's an opportunity that we can create some great environment for the city of Wilkes-Barre and clean up that entire block. It's two blocks away from here. Do we want another ten or twenty years of looking at a flat, dirty parking lot or something that's developed into something that's very nice? Where, you know, Mr. Thornton had said, you know, he he goes away all the time to concerts. We.
What an insult.
But but, I mean, you've got the Iron, you've got the Kirby, people come into those shows, they could stay at a hotel, they can, you know, go downtown, walk and utilize the restaurants and everything. I think even, you know, Mr. Sabatino, you have a restaurant downtown as well. I think it would it would help you out as well. So it it's just, let's have a vision for once and not just say no, just to say no because of somebody else's idea. You know, I mean, like the actual HUD letter. I I've I've talked to the congressman's office too. And 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 I said, you know, I'm a Republican and you're talking about Democrats here that can't even get a a letter from HUD from their own administration. Which is a shame. You know, to clear us from that obligation should we utilize that U-Dag money? You know, and 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 I think we need to push, I mean, I'd like to ask for other public support, maybe Mayor Brown to to jump in as well to to, and then maybe State Representative Shinsky to go after HUD to get a letter, you know, because I've tried as a council member to 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 talk to HUD. All I got was the binder on U-Dag no longer exists. It's unrestricted as long as you use it for economic development. But, you know, it's a chance, it's a roll of the dice, it's a coin flip, you know. But I don't see the federal government, I I can't see the federal government suing loser in county for developing a project or helping develop a project in the future that's going to bring in jobs. That would be counterintuitive, counteract, you know, sort of reactive for for them to go back and say, okay, we're not going to sue loser in county for that six million. I just don't see that happening.
Mr. Thornton.
Thank you. I I don't want to frighten anybody here in the room, but if I was the owner of that property and I was forced to leave it as it is, I wouldn't sit on that for another ten years as a third party. The owner of that property, because it is zone commercial, that that entity could have put anything here. They could put Turkey Hill, they could put a sheets there. That would be the entrance to Wilkes-Barre, big sheets or Turkey Hill. We have an opportunity to partner up with people here and get something grandiose for Wilkes-Barre. And I think, you know, we really need to think seriously about that. We would also, these are serious seats we sit in and we could truly be enormously helpful, or we cannot. And to cannot option really paints a very bleak picture for years to come.
Mr. Brooke, anything else?
No, except I just wanted to say, Mr. Silas here, the principal of H and N Investments. And Chris Thord is also here from from Quandell, who do the construction. Us, but, you know, we don't have any more people speaking. I think we're taking up a good time. But we're prepared to meet with any of you in an executive session or, you know, just privately go over some of the the detailed financial information. We'd be happy to do that. We want this to be transparent. We want this to be a project that the community can be very proud of. Because really, it's, these kind of projects don't come along every day. And, you know, without the support of of the community, it doesn't happen. And I constantly tell you that if you can't get the help, you know, from the public sources on this project, it just isn't feasible. It's just, you know, and given the cost of today, it just makes it so, so difficult to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up. Discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with WellPath, WellPath for inmate medical services. Yeah, anybody who was here for the Sterling project, you don't have to stay for us. I mean, you don't want.
Good evening, members of council, Andrew Crockmo, members of the public. Here tonight on behalf of the Division of Correctional Services to recommend approval for the council to approve a three year contract renewal with WellPath for inmate healthcare services. Just as a quick recap, we initially put the RFP out July tenth of this year, two thousand twenty-three. We had at our walkthrough on August first, four companies come to go through the walkthrough, look at the facility, look at the the challenges, look at how the inmates and the medical work there in our outdated building. And the RFP closed August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And we had a sole bidder, which was WellPath. And the review committee met after reviewing the proposal from WellPath. The committee agreed that they would be able to continue providing the crucial care to our inmate population. And also continue to provide the medical assistance treatment program, which again was started this year. And also continue the mental health services, which I'm very pleased to say at this particular moment are seven days a week in our facility. One, one thing I would note is working with the WellPath team, I was able to, when we first, they first came in with the 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 figures for year one, two, and three, I was able to go back to that team and specifically Larry Dahl and negotiate a decrease of three point eight percent. So we were able to save in year one, a hundred and sixty-eight. So we were able to save in year one, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand forty-three dollars. So um. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
For two thousand twenty-four, it would opioid would be applied to the to the budget to cover the. Basically, the the medical assisted treatment program. Yes, sir. This this number here includes medically assisted treatment.
Yeah, so that actual number into the general budget will be less.
The, well, I, if you look at the budget proposal for two thousand twenty-four, which I'll have here shortly. Um the opioid, proposed opioid money for two thousand twenty-four goes into other income. So we'll go into another income line. It won't necessarily come and then go to the expense line directly of inmate healthcare services.
I thought specifically because of that program, which I think everybody agrees that. The opioid example would be part of that payment.
Yeah, I think so. I I think so.
You have to know the details.
Sure.
In other words, is any of that fourteen million dollar total paid forty-six?
Right.
Is any of that going to be paid out of that opioid fund?
Well, that that's the plan for two thousand twenty-four is proposed. So if you looked at the breakdown, I don't have the breakdown of what. When it, when they looked at it, inmate healthcare services, then the medically assisted treatment program, the breakdown is the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is the cost of the medical assisted treatment, which is, yes, it will be applied towards that. If that answers your question, Mr. Martin. For two thousand twenty-three, yes. Correct. Yes, correct.
So to the general budget. This number will not be all in the general budget because you have no void.
Right, but two thousand and twenty-three, we had only, we have to work with budget and finance to figure out how to realize that money into that line. Into that GL. Any other questions?
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Thornton. All right, uh discussion regarding the payment of Act thirteen invoices.
But we have that thirteen uh money and there uh there was a vote to. Have uh certain invoices uh viewed by the Act thirteen uh committee. Uh there are some costs and invoices that are actually in budget. Invoices that are attached here or not, uh and they were approved by the committee uh to be presented to council for.
Yeah, uh I chair the Act thirteen committee and sitting on it with me is uh this this is McDermott, Mr. Scavage. And one thing we noticed, uh my short time on that committee, uh you know, the invoices that are incurred. Um we really haven't seen them come before us at meetings, the Act thirteen meetings, and I like to change that and I'd like to. In an effort to improve transparency for everybody, the public. I'd like those invoices present during our Act thirteen committee meetings. So that the Marcelo shale funds that come into the county and are used on various uh. County expenses like utilities and and other other things here with the River Commons. Uh I'd like to discuss them at an Act thirteen meeting so that the public could weigh in. And ask his questions of why you're spending that money or where where did that go? So that's what we're striving to get to now. And then when the committee approves by vote at a public Act thirteen meeting. Uh any payment of those invoices, we approve and recommend that it be passed down to this council for their approval. So that's the process that's supposed to happen, and I'm just trying to make it more uh detailed and transparent. I want to thank Controller uh Griffin for a great audit he did on the funds. Uh he completed it about two months ago and he uncovered a lot of uh things that I wasn't aware of with that Act thirteen committee. And he's taken steps now to learn of this to a lot of issues, which uh I I think County Manager Crocker Mo addressed. Uh sufficiently and uh going forward, I think uh it's going to be a lot more transparent. Um and there was one particular project, Dupont Borough, it's listed in here. Uh I don't want to spend much time on it because we're here long enough, but um the project. Cost instead of uh six thousand some, it costs nine thousand and some by the time they got done. So the county obligated thirty-two hundred dollars towards that project in the very beginning. Sixteen hundred dollars to be paid to them upfront and then another sixteen hundred to be paid later on. Uh their their project and the uh Dupont Borough was responsible. For coming up with the rest of the money, uh not the borough specifically, but they had to go out and get the money from. Which they did and uh the Lions Club in that area contributed a lot of money to that project, so. Uh we don't have an issue with that project and uh. There's no problem there as far as I'm concerned, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
The match actually specifically Dupont Borough or could have been with other entities.
It's my understanding, I spoke to uh Turner about it, it could come from other entities, it doesn't have to be paid out of Dupont Borough.
Are we giving it to Dupont Borough? How much money did Dupont Borough put into the project?
It's on that sheet. If you turn back, they even asked you, but it went over. And it and even got additional ones, which they applied to the project, you know, so.
The act for team to be set up specifically to help with this. With recreational kinds of things.
Right.
Also, in our budget, we do have mine items that specifically pump that. So if we approve a budget. And that's in the budget. That's done. That doesn't have to go to the county.
Right.
Council's already approved that.
Right, exactly.
So any expenses that are in the budget that are being paid by Act thirteen money. We approve the budget, they're done.
Right, but there were other expenses.
That's fine. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Right, right.
The ones that are in the budget, they're currently in the budget.
They're approved.
They're approved.
Anything else? All right, uh is that okay for the discussion for number six then as well? Does that, you have anything else to say? Got it? Okay, all right. I will move on to the budget work items. Um the controller. Oh, okay.
There we go. All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um well, first of all, on my budget, it's a zero based budget as you can see on the budget itself. The only increases and and variations are in wages and taxes for payroll taxes, so uh we did a. A hundred percent increase on the uh. Uh five sixty sixty-four fund, we just switched those numbers around a little bit so we can have enough funding for training for the staff as they go to uh. We we've done some online training, which helped the staff a lot. We did Excel, we did Word, we did some. Some online courses through LCCC, which was very beneficial, so we needed to switch that dollar amount around, so that's basically the only. Changes in my budget this year uh for twenty twenty-four. Uh we have a full staff currently on the. On the uh Controller's Office. We performed over about thirty, thirty plus audits this year so far. So I'm very pleased with the amount of work that the Controller's Office has put out on such a limited budget. And uh what, you know, quite honestly, there's, there's really has not been any increases that that we really need to be considering for the, for the uh. Council to consider. Our our staffing levels are the same and nothing really has changed, so I appreciate the support from council in the. Past year that I was uh in twenty twenty-two when you adopted a budget for me for twenty-three and uh we've been pretty diligent about spending our money, so. Thank you very much for the allocation and if you have any questions, I I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Controller Griffith. Any questions? All right, moving on, uh we already had, already had District Attorney, we'll move on to the courts.
Good evening, everyone. Paul Heimars, District Court Administrator for the courts. I'm here this evening uh to talk about our budget, but also with me is uh Attorney Lisa Pirati, who heads up our domestic relations. Department as well as Emory Brasky, who heads up our probation uh services department. Uh we do have some changes to our budget uh on the revenue side. Uh we have an additional two hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue uh in forty-one eighty-four, four five, four fifty-five, ten. Uh we've got an additional ninety thousand dollars uh which is coming in from uh the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts. Uh to help offset and reimburse uh for security equipment uh for the courthouse. Uh building in forty-two thirty-seven. Uh uh probation department four forty-five, ten, we've got some additional grant money. Uh coming in from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. And in forty-one eighty-seven, four sixty thirty-one, uh we've got some additional incentive money. Uh moving that number from two point seven million to two point eight for twenty twenty-four. In addition to, as uh previous folks have come up here and and discussed this evening, there were some uh contracts that were settled. Uh in both the probation services and domestic relations as well as our uh magisterial district courts. Uh which represent uh some additional uh salary increases uh in those. Uh as well as in forty-one eighty-four uh increases that were in line with uh the previous budget of twenty twenty-three. Uh the particular expense items that I'd like to point out this evening are uh. The majority of of which those increased expenses are in supply line items. The cost of supply and especially in the courts, uh the cost of toner and paper. Uh have gone up significantly. Uh so in forty-one eighty-three, our magisterial district courts, uh they requesting the supply line item, we moved uh an additional thirty thousand. In forty-one eighty-four, uh in the common pleas, uh an additional twenty thousand. Also in forty-one eighty-four, uh contractual increase uh in our Westlaw Research and Information. Services for twenty twenty-four uh uh is going up an additional fifty thousand and I might add that uh. This was due in part to some additional uh staff being added to the Westlaw service. Uh as well as uh making offerings to our district magistrates to have uh online access to legal reference material. Uh there's another increase in five ninety-nine, forty-six and forty-one eighty-four machinery and equipment. Uh. Uh that will be used to offset uh some of the security per uh. Equipment that we need moving forward that will, uh the revenue that will then be coming from the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts. Uh in forty-two thirty-seven, five sixty sixteen, uh we requested another ten thousand dollars. Due to increasing uh the number of tests that uh we're giving to our clientele. In forty-two thirty-seven, five sixty sixty-four, our training line item. Uh there's been an increase in the cost to train our probation officers uh to their mandated uh. Training requirements annually. Uh that represents the majority of of the increases. Uh. In addition to the increase in the revenue. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have this evening or moving forward.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Heimars.
Okay, I did have one other idea, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh so moving forward in uh. I'm requesting your review and approval to add some additional monies into uh, it's not a general fund line item. It's one of our accounts in probation's services. There is some additional monies coming in. Uh state funds for juvenile office training, it was not included in our other accounts. Uh we prepared the budget with the administration and the Budget and Finance Office. Uh so for your consideration, if you don't mind, I'm going to hand this out this evening, uh so that you may consider it as you move forward in your budget discussions. We'll give you time to take a look at it. And available by email or phone, any questions that you may have, as you can see, it's towards the bottom, six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars.
And copy of this will have to be. Just make sure, just making sure.
We just discovered it today and talked to the budget finance staff and. Beneficial to. Ended up this evening as well.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, solicitor.
Good evening, County Council and County Manager Crocker Mo, Harry Steen, Chief County Solicitor. So my office is broken up into two sections, basically. Conflict counsel, which is cases that we have that are overflowed or ones that are conflict with public defender's office. And we have parents counsel who are children. The Office of Law, it's kind of hard for us to. Know what those budgets are going to be, because we, in conflict, we don't know how many cases are going to be conflicted out and sent to us. And we do have a pretty good idea of the costs associated with parents counsel. Now, when it comes to the Office of Law, as you all have seen uh this year, we, there are settlements. There are legal matters that come up in the middle of the year that we don't know about. And it's difficult to predict exactly what is going to happen. We have insurance for most of our actions. Our insurance always has deductible. Uh the insurance company picks outside counsel and we have to pay it. So the money comes up. I don't have grants like some of my colleagues have. I have just general fund money. We try our best to reduce the expenses. I've been working with the insurance companies this way this year for twenty twenty-four to give us the ability. To work with the uh insurance counsel so that we can try to lead them down. Uh a path to make cases more efficient that can either settle earlier or can resolve in a faster time period. We have a lot of cases that have strabbled for a little bit of time and I'm trying to reduce that. And if we could reduce the costs associated with outside counsel, we could lower the costs on ourselves. But outside of that, it's very difficult for us to reduce. Our office expenses um are minimal. We have our office management software. And we have Westlaw. And a little bit of money for licensure and uh CLE. But. Our expenses are are low otherwise, so we try to keep everything down, but it's the unknowns that usually cause us problems. So. We continue to try to do our best. The amount that's here. We're we're about out of money for this year, even though council was generous enough to give us money to cover that we needed that. For an unexpected case that settled earlier in the year. But again, we have new matters that come up and council has to be paid. We all know we had that election. Matter come up this year that was also quite costly. So we'll do our best to keep the price down, but we have to pay the bills that we get. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Mr. Dermott.
Is that something that you think that they should have their own budget?
No. No. The the it's not a very expensive part compared to everything else that we have in expenses and I think it would be. It would be bad to give. We have a a many different boards and commissions and they don't have budgets. We've had people that want budgets. They want to raise money for themselves and spend it, but we have. You know, volunteers in these groups that are working and if we start opening that up to budget, everybody's going to want to budget.
Anything else? All right, very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Corrections. Welcome back.
Good evening again, members of Council, Manager Croco, Public. Uh here uh this evening to present the proposal for the two thousand and twenty four budget for the Division of Correctional Services. Um I will say that the budget preparation was a exhilarating and challenging. Um event when you have all the working pieces that we have within the correctional services. Within our three departments, which is Corrections and Administration, the Minimal Offenders Unit and Loser and County Correctional Facility. I know that, you know, initially when we came and had our conversation with the Manager Croco. And she gave us the good news that we were going to have a zero budget and we said, okay, sounds good. Went back, uh sat down with the team over there at the at the facilities and said, okay, uh. We need to figure this out um because we have to figure out how we're going to be able to increase wages with an impending and upcoming. Contract renewal for our uh union represented employees. Also make sure that uh there would be some ability to provide some increase in the income for uh nonrepresented. Uh on top of a brand new upcoming contract for inmate healthcare services. And um and a few other things. So we uh we sat down and had numerous conversations, looked at everything. And the one thing I that jumped out at me uh initially um was the fact that. Out of this total budget, which is going to be proposed in two thousand and twenty four as far as expenses and then when you look at. The overall um of thirty million, a little over thirty million. Most of that. Amount. Is wages wages and healthcare, right? So there's not a lot that we can do to move that around too much. When you look at the four and five year trends for operational costs and what we operate those two buildings as they're aging, as they're getting older. Um as the challenges arise, um I we I have to say um our staff. And our our maintenance department, everybody does a tremendous job um doing that. And so when we look at the adopted revenue for this two twenty twenty three, we had eight hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen. But then in two thousand and twenty four, we're looking at a proposed revenue of one million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty. And that's due to um. All the offsetting, as we spoke about just a little bit, as Mr. McGinley brought up, the offsetting and the anticipation of the opioid settlement funds. Uh which will offset the medical assisted treatment program of four hundred and fifty thousand. And also, we have one grant that we receive uh every year from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. For the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, but that the way that that works is it it. The the monies that were awarded now were from an app application that was done uh you know, a a few years prior. Looking at the budget, looking at our challenges, we were able to then. When we sat down with the Budget Committee, suggest let's place those monies because those monies have to offset correctional costs. So let's place those monies to offset correctional costs for two thousand and twenty four and that would be the two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and twenty six. So then when we looked at expenses, two thousand and twenty three, we were looking at thirty million, six hundred and forty three thousand, six hundred and seventy six. We were able through a lot of uh a lot of movement, some staffing adjustments, some other areas to. Come in with a proposed expenses for two thousand and twenty four of thirty million, three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirty six dollars. And um our staffing has stayed relatively steady. Um we were um. With nonrepresented employees in two thousand and twenty three, we had twenty three. Uh we are going to start twenty four with twenty. And on the represented side, um we have in two thousand and twenty three, two hundred and ninety six. And in two thousand and twenty four, we're going to start with two ninety four. So we are we're able to keep our staffing levels where we need them to be. Um a couple of areas to point out. I know. We had a question about one line item in regards to. Um the other inmate housing that comes up because historically, I believe the number was the the number was two hundred thousand. Then it went down to a thousand, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, and now it's forty thousand. But looking at the budget, you would see in that line item, which is back in that's going to be in the Department of forty two thirty five. It um. When you look at that line item, uh which is five fifty eighty three. Back in two thousand and twenty two, there was eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty five dollars spent. With the others or outside inmate housing, normally we're fortunate enough to work with other counties. And we do what's called a Wardens Agreement. It's basically an agreement where we say in Loser and County, we'll work with another county to accept inmates. Vice versa, and we have a really good relationship with other counties with that. However, the concern about taking money out of that line item this year is we have an uptick in juvenile crime. And juveniles are being charged as adults and we're very, very limited. In our facility over here because you're required to have juveniles separated by sight and sound from adult inmates. So we're very limited in the space that we have. Um so if we were to in fact get one more juvenile, we would have to look. To having that juvenile housed at another facility. Um and we actually have one on a Wardens Agreement due to another issue um right now. But any others will probably have to realize the cost. That's why I'm not, I I really would not be comfortable taking that line down. With the anticipation, we may have some more juveniles, unfortunately, in two thousand and twenty two. Um the other uh the other items that uh really um the only other things to really point out. In regards to uh the in the forty two thirty three department, which is our administrative department. We saw an increase of twenty three percent in regards to the expenses, but most of that. All of that, for the most part, is contractual prisoner healthcare services. That's just held in that department. Uh in forty two thirty four, we realized a uh a reduction in the uh expenses there. Four hundred and ninety five thousand, seven hundred and forty nine dollars. Some is staffing adjust uh adjustments. The other, we decided when we sat down with the Budget Committee is to move all of food services into the forty two thirty five. So we took the three hundred thousand dollars that was in the forty two thirty four uh for food services, moved it into forty two thirty five. Um and then made that adjustment there. And then uh also in forty two thirty five. The uh two percent, we saw a decrease of three hundred and sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty one. As far as expenses go, even with trying to get those increases for wages and anticipation. Uh but that was due for staffing to staffing adjustments. We really worked hard to try to find out how are we going to effectively. And efficiently run the facility, run the division moving forward into two thousand and twenty four. Um the staff, our budget analyst, Karen Crisick. Uh the Deputy Warden, uh some of the captains, Captain uh Fran Ibo Dinger, um and Captain uh, you know, uh. We had Captain Bronsberg as well in those discussions. Um did a great job of of coming up with some really good. Viable solutions so that we can go into two thousand and twenty four, um meeting the County Manager's goal. But knowing that our facility is going to be safe, effective and efficient. Um you have any questions for me?
Any questions from Council members?
I applaud you and your staff for what you just said, that they worked really hard to figure out key wage, strategic wage to get that that. That's that's what's important.
Thank you, thank you.
And they did. It's a really difficult division to meet the standard that uh. We charged our divisions to to meet.
I just like to say congratulations because I think what you do there, you're kind of hanging into a corner, so come up with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilber.
Thank you, Council.
All right, uh last but not least, Public Defender.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about the public defender's budget, but I do have with me Attorney uh Yeager who can help with um, you know, any questions that you may have that I can't answer, but. I think I'm okay at this point. Um so the Public Defender's Office obviously is not a revenue generating office, however. Revenue, we are budgeting at the same amount as two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which is basically coming from. Fourteen thousand dollars for out of county charges, which are basically charges for um that we're able to build people back. So people that are housed here in our county that we need to defend, um you know, we can we can build those counties back. And then the majority of it, two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, is the Mental Health and Developmental Services reimbursement for four attorneys. Um well, three attorneys and admin staff. As far as the expenses go, I mean, they're pretty much uh exactly aligned with where uh the budget was before, with the exception of a decrease of. Um meetings, conferences and trainings of thirty one point seven two percent and then the subscriptions which increased. And that's for the renewal for the Justice Works uh upgrade that we've talked about, I think, previously at at some of the council meetings. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to to answer them. And again, Attorney Yeager could fill in what I cannot.
Any questions from Council? All right, thank you. All right, we will now have public comment. Any members of the public here? Like comment? All right, we have two hands up on Zoom, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to uh thank Corrections Division Head, Mr. Wilber. Because I think it's a first for any budget hearing I've ever been to since Home Rule began. Where a division head said they were exhilarated to present the budget. I think that is the first, in my humble opinion, but maybe I'm wrong on that. Uh I would like to ask as far as uh the uh situation on the. Uh trying to find where it says, oh, the Udag money. So the Udag money, uh it was said during the presentation on the Hotel Sterling. That the Udag money was initial use, it was for the Hotel Sterling. That is not historically accurate. Mr. McGinley is correct on that because, in fact, it was as uh in the May of two, May two thousand and twenty. Uh Redevelopment Authority Meeting, uh our acting, now acting director. Uh explained the Udag uh history, which uh the inception was in nineteen eighty four. And that had to do with the housing based on the flood. Okay, so then it had nothing to do with the Hotel Sterling. So I just wanted to make that clear that uh the the monies that uh were gained by the Udag from the county. Had nothing to do with the Hotel Sterling whatsoever. So that's just out of historical accuracy. Also, with regards to the prison, uh I I believe Mr. Wilber doesn't know, but I don't know if the County Manager knows, but I know Mr. McGinley and Mr. Urban know. Uh especially Mr. Urban, who was on the Corrections Division uh Committee at the time. I believe there was a federal program through the Bureau of Prisons for undocumented criminal illegals that were housed. At county prisons and jails that were rotated uh among different Pennsylvania prisons at the time. And that's when we uh when our county prison incurred a a huge uh overpopulation. Uh so when that program was terminated, that's when we did not have the the uh the overpopulation at the prison that we had. So that's what led to a lot of consternation in terms of especially getting the money for those criminal illegals that were housed there at the time. I I believe, I don't know if it was Mr. Nesbit or Mr. Rakovich that had to uh deal with the Bureau of Prisons at the time. But uh that that was what led to a lot of problems during those budget years. So also, I would make one suggestion on the uh conditions to expound on Controller Griffith said. Uh hold harmless indemnification should be placed if councils to consider giving any of that Udag money for that project. I strongly urge the county.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
Harmless agreement in. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um on the Hotel Sterling project. As a Controller, it's my duty to advise the Council what's in the best interest of the peoples' county. That project does not have a definite start date. The project does not have sufficient funding. The city has provided no funding and sold the property to developer for over three hundred thousand dollars. Why wasn't the land donated to the developer if it was so important to the city's revitalization? The city's making a profit on that project, yet now they're turning around saying how beneficial it is. Why didn't they just give them the land? They own the land. Udag money is not available because we are still obligated to pay that money back to the state or to the federal government. Unless Udag gives us a a letter, as Mr. Urban said, he's been in contact, so have I. And unless they give us a letter absolving us of that responsibility, we should not spend that money until we get that letter. Either a letter of saying we don't have to pay it back or a letter saying the project will absolve us of the responsibility. One or the other should be done. Is if if it's a difference between pot being positive and being reckless, we need to be due diligent and critical in this project. The the ability for these people to stand at the podium and and give us this pie in the sky presentation, I agree, that corner should be developed. But I think we need to make sure that we're safely doing it, not just throw money at a project at the risk of being responsible to pay the money back to the federal government. Will they come back? I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball, neither does anybody on Council, but we need to be very careful here. Before we fund a project that he doesn't even have the funding for to start with. There was no inflation three years ago when he wanted to do this project. He could have started it three years ago if he had the funding. The problem is he didn't have the funding and he still doesn't have it. As far as the Ace Commission goes with Mr. Steen saying that we don't need our own budget, because if that was the case, all the committees would be coming for budgets. The Ace Committee is mandated by your code, the one that this council put in place in section one, one oh four dash ten. It says we are to do an RFP to get attorneys and they cannot be hired by the county. That's what it says. If the Solicitor's Office is paying them, then he's the one who's responsible for them. Let him get the RFP and hire the attorney. But he can't do that because the code doesn't allow that. So we need to have our own budget to pay these attorneys because we're putting out RFPs guaranteeing these attorneys that we have funding to hire them when in fact we don't. The Blighted Property Committee has their own budget, Retirement Board has their own budget, Forty Four Airport has their own budget, Solid Waste Board has their own budget. There's Act thirteen Committee has their own budget. Why are we saying that we don't need our own budget while we're responsible to pay these attorneys? It's beyond my comprehension. That is just fallacy. This commission needs to have their own budget to pay these attorneys. It should not be coming from the Solicitor's budget at all. That's a separate division. It's a separate department than the Ace Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment? Motion second, all in favor? Opposed, meetings adjourned. Thank you. Turn your mics off.